I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. LaFever?
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is recognitions. I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Cates.
Good evening and welcome this evening. We are pleased to recognize some outstanding students for some recent accomplishments. And I'd like to call Director of Athletics and Activities Eric Winkowski to the podium, please.
Thank you, Dr. Cates and Board of Education. Thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some really talented students. I'm going to ask students that as you sponsor introduces you, to please walk forward and get your medal and stand here next to the podium. Additionally, I'm going to ask any family members of students that are here today that as your students are presented, please stand when instructed by the coach or sponsor to be recognized. Helping to present students tonight are Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Assistant Principal Michael Alther. Carl Garrison is first with Palatine, well, first and only today with Palatine Science Olympiad. Carl Garrison has been in District 211 for 19 years. He's spent 11 years as the Palatine Science Department Chair. Carl has been coaching the Science Olympiad for the last 10 years, and his teams have a streak of qualifying for the Science Olympiad State Tournament of eight years in a row. Carl?
Good evening. I am just thrilled to be here again with the Palatine High School Science Olympiad Team. I'm glad we're making this yearly habit and hopefully it will continue. I want to recognize the other coaches here with me tonight who helps, we all coach the Science Olympiad Team. So we have Patrick Rowan from the Science Department. And we have Robert Hites from the Science Department. Our other coach Alex Larson wasn't able to make it tonight. So all of us want to thank the Board of Education for providing our students the opportunity to participate in this activity. Our Superintendent Dan Cates, our Principal Tony Medina, our Assistant Principal Mike Alther, and our fellow Science Department colleagues for their continuous support. And of course, the coaches want to give a special thank you to the wonderful parents for sharing your students with us and allowing us to work with them on all of these science topics. So thank you, parents. So what is Science Olympiad? It's a team competition in which 15 students work together to cover 23 different events. Covering everything from earth science, biology, chemistry, physics, astronomy, engineering, so a whole bunch of things. Like Eric said, we competed state tournament for the eighth time. This is our sixth year at AA level, and we finished 16th this year. As a team, we won medals in five separate events. So here are the students who won the medals at the State Science Olympiad Tournament. Parents, please stand when I recognize your student and I introduce you. In the astronomy event where students demonstrated an understanding of stellar evolution in normal and starburst galaxies, earning a fourth place medal in astronomy accompanied by his mother Hongwei Du and Kevin Wang. We have team captain and senior John Wang. John will be attending Harvard University next year where he plans to study neuroscience and philosophy. Also earning a fourth place medal in astronomy accompanied by his mother Sandra Montoya and his father Jose Tierra Blanca, we have junior Hugo Tierra Blanca. In the forensics event, an event where students are given a scenario and some possible suspects, students perform a series of tests and use these along with other evidence or test results to solve a crime. So earning a fourth place in forensics accompanied by her mother Jennifer Steffes and her father Thomas Steffes, we have junior and team captain Laney Steffes. Also earning a fourth place in forensics accompanied by her mother Teresa Dixon and her father Michael McDermott, we have junior Heather McDermott. In the write-it-do-it event, one student will write a description of an object and how to build it, and then another student will attempt to build it without having seen that object. Very demanding. So earning a third place medal in write-it-do-it accompanied by his mother Christine Lindstrom and his father Scott Lindstrom, we have sophomore Kevin Lindstrom. Also earning a third place medal in write-it-do-it accompanied by his mother Bobby Selvik and his father Chris Selvik, we have Andrew Selvik. And Andrew's a sophomore also. In the e-write-stuff, teams construct and test an electric motored airplane to achieve maximum flight times. Energy to the motor is provided by a capacitor. And earning a third place medal in e-write-stuff up from fifth place last year accompanied by her father Jeffrey Service, we have junior Jocelyn Service and team captain. Also earning a third place medal in e-write-stuff accompanied by her mother Carol Schiller, we have junior Nicole Schiller. In the indoor bottle rocket event, students must construct a bottle rocket that carries a ping pong ball as high as possible powered only by 40 PSI of air with the score being how long it takes for the ping pong ball to return to the ground. So earning a first place finish in indoor bottle rocket and new state champion accompanied by her mother Sumana Sayya Narayana, we have sophomore Megan Asturi. Also earning a first place finish in indoor bottle rocket and new state champion accompanied by his uncle Jan Yves Cabral de Barros, we have senior Brielle Charles Fouchard. Brielle Charles will be attending Benedictine University in the fall and studying chemistry. So on behalf of Palatine High School, Science Olympiad Team, the coaches, and the students, and all of our supporters, we thank the Board of Education for this opportunity and thank you for recognizing students for their hard work. Thank you.
Every high school student who prepares for college is aware of the importance placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test, what we commonly know as the ACT. Of the nearly 2 million students who take the ACT, fewer than 4,000 earn the highest possible composite score of 36. Tonight, we recognize a William Framed High School student who has achieved this remarkable accomplishment. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate our student. We have a certificate for her that Board President Bob LaFever will present in just a moment. This time, I'd like to ask Framed High School English teacher Becky Schumer to come to the podium and introduce our student.
Forty-nine years old. Thank you for this opportunity. It is an honor tonight to introduce to you Nikita Karthekein. I'd also like to welcome her parents who are here in the audience, Nermla and Karthik. We're here to recognize Nik- Nikita. That was going to happen. This happened at the very beginning of the year. Nikita, Nikita, and then I finally got it right. So now I knew I was going to talk myself into saying it wrong. Okay, so let me start that again. So we're here to recognize Nikita's amazing accomplishments, a perfect 36 on the ACT. In acknowledging that, it should also be noted that she's not just a test score. She's a well-rounded, genuinely good person with much to offer the world. She's an integral member of the debate team, specifically Student Congress at Framed High School. Nikita is also a member of National Honor Society, HOSA, and a founding member of the Red Cross Club. These accolades will be featured prominently on Nikita's college applications and will undoubtedly lead to admission into our university of choice. But there's more to the story of Nikita. When she asked me to introduce her tonight, one of the first thoughts that came to mind was her work ethic and drive. In a world where many students at the AP level are extrinsically motivated, Nikita's driven intrinsically. Never has she asked how many points something is worth, never has she disputed a grade, and consistently, she seeks advice and applies constructive criticism in order to improve. She comes to class with an open mind, prepared to learn, not to be given a grade. Next year, when the class of 2020 is voting on senior superlatives for the Viking log, I will be rooting for Nikita to win the category of talks the least but says the most. In a class of highly competitive students, at times dominated by a few, Nikita offers the most insightful and profound contributions to class discussion. We seem to share a code, my facial expressions and Nikita's responses. She knows when my eyebrows raise, the class needs to hear her opinion. When they come together accentuating the 11 between them, she knows it's time to gracefully and powerfully dispute an absurd or inaccurate comment. There've been days when the bell rings at 2:45 and these conversations continue well past 3:00 PM because Nikita and some of her peers are so invested in the discussion. Moderating those chats has been one of the highlights of the school year for me. I can't thank her enough for her role in my classroom and cannot wait to hear what the future holds for such a humble, intelligent, compassionate leader. Thank you for your time, and congratulations, Nikita. You're among an elite group of individuals, and I am fortunate to know you.
Advanced placement exams are scored on a five-point scale, with the score of five being equivalent to an A. We are proud to recognize a Framed High School student who not only received a score of five on her AP Computer Science exam, but is among an elite group of students to earn every possible point on the AP exam and receiving the maximum score. This is an extraordinary academic accomplishment. Approximately 5 million AP exams are taken by over 2.5 million public high school students each year. Fewer than 200 students achieve a perfect score on an AP exam. I'd like to ask Framed High School Mathematics teacher Shannon Danner to come forward and introduce our student. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate our student. Mr. LaFever will again present a certificate in just a moment.
Hi, thank you. And I'd like to introduce Alice Chen to the board and welcome her mother Judy Wang. It is an honor and a pleasure for me to introduce Alice here to you tonight. As we were just told, to earn a perfect score on this test is just amazing. Not shocking for me because she earned a perfect score on every practice test we took in class, but still impressive, unbelievably so. There were 66,000 students who took this exam worldwide last year, and only 166 of them earned all 80 points on the exam. So that's very impressive. This is just one of the amazing things that makes Alice the student that she is. Last year when I had her in my class, she was one of those students who worked exceptionally hard. She did every single assignment that was offered, even the extra practice for students who were struggling when clearly she wasn't struggling. If she found anything that she thought might have been a mistake on my part, she would most politely as possible ask me about it and point it out. And she was just, I just, I wish I could convey how sweet and gracious she is in her amazing intelligence. I wanted to highlight a few of her amazing accomplishments, and then I realized I had a minute to talk and I didn't know what to cut. So I'm going to try to pick just two things. So one of them is that she has not only earned a perfect on her AP exam, she also earned a 36 on her ACT and a 1,600 on her SAT. So yeah, that's pretty amazing. And she excels not just in computer science, but she's amazing in mathematics and science as well. Just last month, our department was very proud that Alice was part of a group of five students who participated in the MathWorks Math Modeling, or M3 Challenge. And there were 877 papers that were submitted for this competition, and Alice's team finished in the top 4% overall, which was a huge accomplishment. This paper, her team, they spent 14 hours working on to write this paper. And the really cool thing about this challenge is that the students were challenged to tackle a real, real problem that they are faced, that our society faces, and put all of their amazing academics to use to solve a problem in society. And the problem that they were challenged for related to the proliferation and impact of substance abuse. So I could go on and on about Alice and how amazing she is, but I just want to summarize by saying that we are so proud of you, and I'm so honored to have had you in class, and I really look forward to hearing about the amazing things that you will do in the future. Congratulations.
This time, I'd like to call Mr. Steve Rosenbloom to the podium to introduce some outstanding parent volunteers who help us throughout the course of the year.
Good evening. The Board of Education would like to honor a special group of people who play a major role in the success of our schools by providing leadership for parent organizations. Each of these parent leaders is committed to providing excellence in education for students and works tirelessly towards this goal. Under their dedicated leadership, our booster clubs collectively awarded more than 65 scholarships this spring to deserving District 211 students totaling nearly $80,000 in financial aid. Through a variety of fundraisers including dinner dances, craft fairs, membership drives, and concession sales, our boosters were able to help offset student costs to post-prom events by more than $95,000. When combined, our District 211 booster clubs collectively raised over $375,000 during the 2018-2019 school year. Three of our schools are also fortunate to have separate band booster organizations. This year, the band booster organizations raised more than $100,000 to help offset costs and to award five student scholarships. It is my pleasure to be able to introduce these outstanding parent leaders and thank them for their organizations and their organizations for their service and many contributions to our students. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your club's certification of appreciation. First, we are pleased to honor someone who is accustomed to attending the annual Booster Club President's Organization. I'd like to ask Hoffman Estates Loyal Partners President Shelley Case to come forward. This was Shelley's fourth year as president. With trivia night, McTeacher Night, and local restaurant nights, helps largest fundraisers collect a lot of money to give to our students and our programs. Thank you, Shelley, for your leadership this year, as well as all that you have provided for the past three years. Also completing his fourth year of office is Conant High School Band President Mike Anzalone. This is Mike's second, come on up, Mike. This is Mike's second consecutive year as president after taking a couple of years off. An annual membership drive, dine-out events, and a dinner concert are their major fundraisers. Mike, thank you for your leadership and expertise for all these years. Representing the Conant Cougar Booster Club is first-year president Elizabeth Pavaza. The Cougars are proud of their Savers fundraiser, the Adult Social Event, and the Mattress fundraiser. I know about that. Unfortunately, Elizabeth isn't able to join us this evening, but our appreciation is equally strong. So thank you. The Pirate Booster Club was led by second-year president Jean Choi and first-year co-president Terri Anne Jones, both of whom were unable to attend tonight's meeting. The Pirate Booster's largest fundraisers included their dinner auction event, a craft fair, and the annual membership drive. I'd like to thank the Pirate Booster Club for all that they have done to Palatine High School for students and staff. Also completing his second year as booster president is Joe Kraus from the Framed High School Viking Boosters. This organization's major fundraisers included a casino night dinner event, spring and holiday craft fairs, as well as school spirit shop and concession sales. Thank you, Joe, for your commitment to Framed High School. Framed Music Association President Hema Kiwar also is in her second year as president. The music association is proud of its fundraisers that included a trivia night, a band benefit dinner, and cookie dough sale. Thank you, Hema. We are sincerely appreciative of your time and leadership. The Schaumburg VIPs have co-presidents. Kathy Pide is finishing her second year as co-president while Carolyn Trinka is completing her first year. The VIP's fundraisers included concession sales, Saxon store spiritware sales, and their annual trivia game night. Thank you, Kathy and Carolyn, for all that you and your organization have done for Schaumburg High School. Schaumburg High School's band boosters are led by first-year board president Carla Franz. Carla was not able to be with us here this evening, but I would like to recognize that her organization contributes to the Schaumburg High School music program through its gift card sales, a holiday concert raffle, and the Benefit Mobile. We are very appreciative of their commitment to Schaumburg High School SHS students and staff. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank all our parent leaders for their leadership and all that they do for our schools, our students, and our staff. Thank you.
Congratulations to our students and their families that we were able to recognize tonight. Also, congratulations and thank you to our booster club presidents for all the support of the students throughout the district. We'll take a break for a few minutes before continuing on with the business portion of our meeting. If you want to get any pictures during the break, feel free to do that. Thank you. Meeting of April 25, 2019 be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Our second suggested motion is that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 25, 2019 be approved and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Yeah, I think I've skipped over our citizens appearances in our presentation, so if there's anybody here tonight that wants to address the board, now's the time for that. All right, that'll bring us to our next presentation on food and restaurant operations pathway. Dr. Cates?
We're very pleased tonight to present you with information about some remarkable programming that we offer throughout the years of high school, and we're here with some experts to share their information with you, and we'll start with Dr. Small.
The experts missed thought, oh my gosh, we're not going to present. Thank you for taking the time to give us a chance to present to you and share some of the wonderful culinary experiences we have within our classrooms. Joining me tonight are four family consumer science teachers, Carrie McGinn, the Schaumburg High School Department Chair, Erica Varela, Palatine High School Teacher, Carrie Frost, Schaumburg High School Teacher, and Angela Dranth, Conant High School Department Chair. The District 211 faculty has worked over the past three years to develop our college major and career clusters. This creates a true exploration for students for their areas of interest, passion, or exploring the unknown. All too common when a student is asked, what do you want to do when you graduate? We get questions such as, I have no idea, whatever has they have just seen on TV that looked interesting, or potentially what a relative does, because that's their scope of understanding within the exploration of their careers. What our college major and career clusters gives us, our students, is the opportunity to look at a broad perspective across all 16 areas, see what may intrigue them, and then go a little bit deeper. So for example, on the slide that's in front of you, hospitality and tourism is one of our 16 clusters. When it's divided into the three pathways, the intention is that the student then has the ability to say, hospitality and tourism sounds interesting, or I know that's something I want to explore, and then go one level deeper as they look into entertainment and event planning, food and restaurant operations, or lodging and travel. Our pathway system gives them the chance to do some thorough investigation from a broader level to a more detailed level, but not necessarily going to a very narrow, specific career. We prefer that they find areas of interest and then look abroad careers that can help them attach to those areas of interest. Each one of our pathways has a series of courses in terms of preparing students for this pathway, whether it be exploration or continued coursework. The first row in this example, which is our food and restaurant operations pathway, are our foundation courses. These courses help a student discover if they truly like and/or have a passion and skill set for the career, and then continues to offer more advanced coursework each year as they continue to develop their skills and their interest for this. The next row of courses are related skills. These would be courses that enhance the skills needed for the student but don't directly apply to the interest level. So for example, if the interest is food and restaurant operations, taking and understanding a world language will certainly enhance your skill, but it won't tell the student whether they like and are passionate about the food and restaurant operations. So that's what the blue line for the related skills would do. The supplemental experiences would be a third option for students if they're looking for different electives in order to complete their schedule for a particular year in school. The bread courses that we have up there are dual credit courses, and in this case, the dual credit courses that are up there happen to be in connection with Harper College.
So the District 211 Culinary Pathway begins with Culinary Arts 1 and 2. These are our longest-running foods classes, and over the years, they have been known by various names. The majority of students in Culinary Arts 1 are freshmen, but there is no prerequisite, so we do get kids of all ages. The kids coming into this course typically have no formal culinary training. They may help at home with meal preparation, but often, they just know that they like to eat. So they- So they come into our class, and our primary goal for these students is to develop some foundational skills that we hope will remain with them throughout their lives as they move on and raise families of their own. And then, we also have the goal of trying to make them just a little bit more worldly by exposing them to foods that they may have never seen or tasted before. As we move down the pathway, we have Practices in Entrepreneurship, or PIE as we refer to it, and Chemistry of Foods. Those are our advanced-level classes. Both of these have been developed with and are taught in conjunction with other departments, specifically Business Education and Science. And in these classes, we build upon the skills that are developed in Culinary Arts 1 and 2, and it includes things like quantity food preparation, customer interface, event planning and production, and we also try to expose them to the opportunities that are in the field of culinary arts in terms of professions. And then lastly, for our coursework, we have independent study courses, and those are our capstone courses, and they are really targeting students who are truly interested in expanding and honing their culinary skills or are preparing for post-secondary study or a career in the culinary or hospitality industry. And the last thing I'll share with you is that quite often, kids join us as ninth graders, and they're new to a large high school setting, and they may have never left the northwest suburbs or eaten at restaurants other than McDonald's and fast-food type of establishments. Because of the atmosphere and camaraderie that's developed in the culinary classes, we do kind of become their mom away from their mom. And a lot of them remain with us as they mature into young adults, and they develop goals and plans, and we help them with that, they share them with us, and a lot of times, they stay in touch with us long after they leave high school.
I'd like to talk to you about Culinary Arts 1 and 2. In Culinary Arts 1, it's an entry-level course where students learn lab procedures, food safety and sanitation, how to read recipes, and most importantly, how to work as a team. We cook in lab as much as possible, typically two or three days a week. Some of the items we've cooked recently include regional dishes such as jambalaya and heta Hawaiian luau. Culinary Arts 2 builds on what students learned in Culinary Arts 1. They learn advanced food preparation techniques such as safe and efficient knife skills to perfect that fine dice of onion, celery, and carrots used typically in a mirepoix, which is the basis for sauces, soups, and stock preparation. Some of the items students have recently prepared include various international specialties from Mediterranean, Asian, and Latin American countries, including crepes, espanocopita, and food truck-style tacos. Students have the opportunity to earn four hours of Harper College dual-credit and earn their Illinois Food Handler License, which is a required certificate for anyone handling food in the state of Illinois, so it really gives them a leg up on the competition when going for those entry-level food service jobs. We do more than just prepare kids for a traditional high school career. We help them with their future and build on what they learned in Culinary 1 as we progress on to Culinary 2.
All right. Chemistry Foods is a year-long, two-period course, co-taught between a science teacher and a family and consumer science teacher. Our course curriculum really meets the needs of a lot of different kinds of students with a non-traditional science and a hospitality-based curriculum. A lot of times, students come in kind of intimidated by the word chemistry, and our course changes that. For instance, pretty much everyone in this room could probably explain what happens if I was to crack an egg onto a hot skillet, but most of us are not going to relate that back to, you know, protein denaturation that we learned in high school chemistry class. But that's exactly what we do in our class. We take what the students already know about foods and cooking, and that's how we teach the science. So the only difference is that we don't have buns and burners and beakers in our course, and everything we make is going to be edible. So they like that. It's very hands-on. Hopefully, they're learning, you know, by doing rather than reading in a textbook, something that's going to stick with them a little bit longer, a little bit more in-depth. In addition to the science, students in the class are also going to be exposed to the business end and the hospitality end of the food service industry. They all share a common lunch hour around those two consecutive periods that they are with us, and that allows for their favorite part of the curriculum, which is our student-run diner. About every two weeks, we offer sit-down and carry-out lunches, bake sales, other types of catering events. Our guests include faculty members, board members, administrators, parents, a lot of Chemofoods alumni actually come back to our events as well, and it gives our students the chance to gain those industry skills in the front of the house and back of the house that they can take with them after they leave. Some of them practice them through jobs that they have when they're in school. And in order to offer good sanitation and food safety, our students undergo a six-week training in the class, and they eventually end up taking the National Restaurant Association's Serve Safe exam. And if they earn their license, it really gives them a leg up, like Erica was saying, with the food handler certificate in the industry, because it's something that all food service operations need. So a lot of our students in the past have gotten promotions or gotten new employment based on the fact that they had the certificate, so it is really good for them. It also earns them two hours of dual-credit through Harper College. So it's a very fun experience for our students as well as our staff members. They look forward to the events. They often, you know, comment afterwards on the great service and food that our students have provided, and that it's just nice to see some of their students that they have in class who are very shy or maybe struggling with their curriculum really excel at the food that they provide and the service that they provide in the dining room. Our biggest event of the year is our charity soup lunch that we put on December, started many years ago with a student idea of a luncheon that we could do, and it has grown into a massive event. We serve over 250 people. Many of you have been there. The diners come and enjoy 13 different kinds of homemade soup, bottomless bowls, as well as homemade pastries and breads with that. They eat that while dining in a classroom that has been transformed by our fashion and interior design students into a true winter wonderland. And in lieu of the normal fee that they would pay for lunch, they bring donations for our blessings in a backpack program or for our magic closet program. So it's a really cool opportunity for our students, very busy week and an exhausting day, but it's very rewarding because it allows them to use their skills and their talents to help to raise funds and goods for, you know, other students in the school at need. So hoping all of you would be able to join us. December 6 this year will be our charity soup lunch.
Our PIE program, or Practices in Entrepreneurship, is a co-curricular class taught with a business education teacher and a family consumer science teacher. So here, students actually spend first semester in a business education class. They are learning how to plan, organize, and run a small business. They learn skills like writing a business plan, marketing, management. Students then transition second semester down to the Family Consumer Science Room and put that plan into action, running our student-run bakery called Cougar Perk. This is our 10th year running Cougar Perk. Students do have a prerequisite, so they do have to have a culinary class before they can enter into PIE. We start off right away running and opening our bakery for our faculty. Students spend Monday through Thursday preparing for a Friday morning bakery. Friday morning, students arrive at 5:30 a.m. to prepare freshly baked items for our faculty. Our menu consists of 10 items with a special that rotates each week. Our students even provided some samples for you over on the side. Our last bakery of the year is tomorrow morning, so they've provided for you some of our products. Advanced students in this course also run a catering business. So first semester, while our new PIE 1 students are learning the business curriculum, our PIE 2 students are working on a catering business that meets the needs of our faculty. So we've done everything from freezer meals, box lunches, order-to-go, catering events in our building, so that those students continue to work on their culinary skills because they'll become managers in our PIE 1's once second semester starts. Students in this course also have the opportunity to earn their Serve Safe Manager's License, so they have the opportunity to earn that dual-credit with Harper College or COD. This is obviously, like we've said before, a nationwide-recognized certification that allows them an edge when they go into the industry once they leave us. Many of them even use it in their high school employment currently. Our former graduate, one former graduate who is currently actually attending COD right now was one of our PIE 1 and 2 students. He actually is also working at Fredo's in Schaumburg, Fredo's Pizza, who's a great partner for us, and he met Mike Coderna, the owner at Fredo's, when he came in to run our pizza competition. So Fredo's comes in and runs a pizza competition with our PIE 1 and PIE 2 students, where our students come up with a pizza to be featured on their menu. So they have to do some research about what's currently on their menu, what's popular, what would customers like, and then the owner brings a chef in, gives them feedback on their pizza, and then selects two winners. He puts both winners' pizza on his menu for one day and does a $2-a-slice competition. The winner of the competition then actually gets to go into the restaurant, create a promotional video of themselves making the pizza, and then has their pizza featured on their menu for a month. Tim was our winner last year, was featured on their menu, then decided to pursue culinary at COD, currently still works there, and has been a big part of our kids coming back and doing the challenge again. We just had Fredo's in last week. We are waiting to hear who our winner is going to be this year so that they can be featured on the menu.
As far as post-high school preparation that we offer for our students, you've heard that we obviously do more than just traditional classroom work to prepare our students. We have our student-run in-house businesses, catering, Practices in Entrepreneurship, student-run bakeries, and dining experiences. We also have FCCLA, which is a student chapter of a professional organization, which gives students the opportunity to compete in a variety of culinary competitions. Some of our students also enroll in our Career Internship Work Program. This helps them get jobs, and also teachers prepare them with workplace skills and how to get along in the workplace environment, and meeting the expectations for a successful workplace experience while still in high school, earning high school credit and money at their job. Career tracks also offer a great opportunity for students to see behind-the-scenes operations in restaurants such as Level 257, Wildfire, Tasty Catering, and Stonegate Banquets, to just name a few. And of course, we have wonderful guest chefs, including chefs from Johnson &amp; Wales, Fredo's Pizza, Pizzabella, the owner of Pizzabella, Tony DiFilippis, comes and actually runs our Chemistry of Foods Pizza Lunch. He runs the oven with the students and helps show them, you know, what does a pizza look like when it's done, and how to get them out to the customers quickly, offers his expertise. And our alumni like to come back and offer their insight on what is the food industry really like. And today, actually, I had a student, former Palatine High School grad, who just recently, about a year and a half ago, graduated from the Culinary Institute of America, got her baking and pastry associate's degree, and is now currently working at a five-star restaurant in Colorado. And she will have two of her pastry items featured on their upcoming menu this summer season. So she talked to our students about what it's like in culinary school, the truth about it, and also the rewards, so really offering students an insight on their possible future. So, thanks.
Our students have many options after graduating high school. Some go directly into the workforce with certifications that give them a head start in the industry based on the courses they've taken at one of our schools. Some attended two-year college such as Harper, Algen Community, or College of DuPage. Harper currently offers culinary certificates in bread and pastry, culinary arts, food service management, and hotel management. The College of DuPage currently offers similar certificate programs, as well as the opportunity to earn an associate's degree in the following areas: culinary arts, baking and pastry, hospitality management, meeting and event planning, and restaurant management. College of DuPage also currently offers a 3+1 option, which would allow students to earn their bachelor's degree with Roosevelt University. Even though COD is considered an out-of-district school for our students, District 211 students are eligible for in-district tuition at COD because Harper College does not offer degree programs, but simply certificates. Some students even attend a four-year university to study culinary or culinary-related fields, including Roosevelt, U of I, Purdue, and UNLV, while others attend private culinary institutes like Kendall College, Johnson &amp; Wales, and the Culinary Institute of America. Our students are truly so fortunate to start learning a skill set in high school that will carry with them no matter what they decide to do after they leave us.
I must say, this is one of the most fun classes to go into in terms of when I visit the high schools. When they have their restaurants and they invite us to come, I encourage you to go. The kids are so proud of what they do, and the food that they produce is absolutely exquisite. They are unbelievable in terms of what they can make, the ideas they have, and then the presentation when they give it to you. So thank you for the time tonight, and we will answer any questions you might have.
I do have, well, kind of a question here, and I don't know if you know the answer. Thank you for all you do, and it's absolutely tremendous. And I know, what was it, a couple of years ago, we had a function over at Conant, and it was for the Illinois Association of School Boards for our division dinner, and the students were just phenomenal, and everyone talked about that for days at a time. So thank you for that. I was just wondering, what kind of communication or conversations are we having with our feeder schools? Because, you know, they've done away with what have been, you know, Home Ec a couple of years ago, but it's so important for the kids to have those skills. Are we talking to them in regards to it?
When our students come in from eighth grade coming into freshman year, they have a course selection sheet, and on that course selection sheet, we narrow it down to all of the electives that they would be eligible for as a freshman. We also have started the past few years to mark them by clusters, so they get to see if they're interested in something potentially, what courses line up to that. So in terms of what the students get to select, they're not handed an entire course book, even though they do have access to it. We actually limit what they see so that they can make good choices in terms of what they're interested in. So they get to see all of our electives that would apply to them as a freshman.
Okay. But well, as part of our conversation with the feeder schools, can they reintroduce maybe some of the Home Ec types of things, or, you know, introduction into the culinary arts, the cooking? Any conversations in that manner with them?
Have we had articulation meetings with them recently? We haven't had articulation meetings, but we do get in touch. They do have some Family Consumer Science Cooking-type clubs, so I know a lot of our different schools have reached out to their clubs to have kids go over and do a demonstration with them. I know we took a group of students over to Mead Elementary School and did kind of like a fair where they got to see some of our electives earlier. So we do try to encourage them to participate and show them the opportunities that they would have when they get to our high schools.
Okay. Thank you.
So I have a few comments and praises. First of all, this is a great example of one of our career clusters, and how important, outside of necessarily college targeting, this gives students another opportunity to explore post-high school opportunities. So thank you all for what you do to give our students those experiences and opportunities. My daughter Sydney, who graduated from Schaumburg, did get a food service certification, which now she has been putting into use at a restaurant that she's working at while in college. So it was one of the things that attracted them to utilize her and her skills, so thank you for that, and she got that at Schaumburg. I also want to praise the IASB Division Dinner that we had at Conant. I am still talking about it, so it's not just for some time. I'm still talking about those little dessert pastries that we got, from the red velvet to the cheesecakes, and made by the students, and served by the students who proudly made them and delivered them to our tables. So thank you so much for that. And when you started to present, I thought to myself, why did they not bring samples? So I want to thank you also for giving us the opportunity to personally experience the success that your students are experiencing. the success that your students are experiencing. So thank you very much for all that you do.
Feel free to join us tomorrow morning for our last bakery, 7:15, Conant.
I just wanted to say, one of my favorite events is a soup event over at Schaumburg. I mean, I love that because I'm a soup person. But I'm really excited about the fact that the kids can earn certificate, food tailing certificates, because in my field, I've done a lot of restaurants, I've designed a lot of restaurants, and you don't know how many people have to kind of guide them into getting this certificate in order for them to open up their restaurants. I think this is a great jump for them, for all our students. And thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will bring us down to Special Reports and Communications. We have some Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions? Next, moving on to unfinished business, we have Board Liaisons. Any questions or comments here? Next, that will bring us to Board Agreements. I think the superintendent put together the Board of Education Agreements from the prior board. Didn't know if you wanted to have any discussion here. All right, that will bring us to New Business. First item is the Curriculum Committee Report. We have a suggested motion that the Curriculum Committee Report and Recommendations be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. Next, we have our Consolidated District Plan. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Consolidated District Plan to utilize the federal Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and IDEA grants totaling approximately $3,866,000 as presented, and authorize the superintendent to submit the plan as required on behalf of Township High School District 211.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. That will bring us to our early morning work sessions. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to approve 12 morning work sessions, each of which would be 75 minutes on the following Tuesdays, August 20, 2019, September 3, 2019, September 17, 2019, October 8, 2019, October 22, 2019, November 5, 2019, January 21, 2020, February 4, 2020, February 18, 2020, March 3, 2020, March 17, 2020, and April 21, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a question. Why is it necessary to approve this? Isn't this a course of business that, I don't know why the board has to approve this thing.
So whenever we alter the instructional day, and we create a change in the number of minutes of attendance that students have.
I think back in the beginning, when we first started these things too, the board at the time said it was something they also wanted to, like, revisit, so it wasn't just blanket going forward, but, you know. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. Next, we have the Notice of Termination of Contract with M&amp;I Homes regarding the sale of 62 acres of land located at East Wise Road and South Summit Drive in the village of Schaumburg.
Some.
Any questions here? All right, that will bring us to Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization Budget. We have suggested motion that the Board of Education ratifies the NSSCO budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year and agrees to pay the district's proportionate share of the budgeted revenues.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. Next, we have Board Member Expenses. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Kimberly-Cavell to attend the new Board Member Orientation, New Board Member Open Meetings Act, state-mandated training on June 21, 2019, and the basics of governance training on June 22, 2019. Mark Kramer to attend the new Board Member Open Meetings Act, state-mandated training on June 7, 2019, and the basics of government training on June 8, 2019. And Robert Lefever to attend the Triple I Conference, November 22 through 24, 2019, as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. Next, we have potential topics for future discussion. Anyone? That will bring us to Committee Reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you for approving the budget. Our next meeting that we will have for the NSSCO is going to be June 26. We're not having the meeting the beginning of June because there's just too much going on and between some of the changes and the changing of the structure with Kirk School and with Minor School. I'd like to highlight our shining star. It was a young man by the name of Ray Sean Harris, and he's from District 26. He attends Minor School, and he was the recipient of the Infinitec North Technology Achievement Award, and they have the dinner with all the assistive technology. So it was a fine young man that was there, very committed to his communication, and really working on self-advocacy for himself. Great support for him, and just a really nice young man that was with us. One of the other items that we had presented to us was the Continuous Improvement Plan, and it, the goal is collaborative partnerships and building future teachers, which ties into a lot of the different courses and options that are offered for students. So the principal at Kirk School and over at Timber Ridge, they're looking for educator prep classes, trying to get our high school students involved and exposed to special ed. And the goal is to give them the whole spectrum of what's involved with special ed, not just one little part, so they can look at, you know, PT, OT, being in the classroom, speech, sign language, all of the different things, giving the kids more rounded exposure to it. At Timber Ridge, they had 12 interns, and at Kirk, they were able to have two interns that participated. So I guess they had a really good turnout in regards to that. One of the other items was the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Academic Bowl. The young people from Hersi, they won the national. So they were there, and we recognized them. They were absolutely tremendous, you know, four young people, they were, they were just terrific. So they were recognized also coming to us. They, they just did an outstanding job. And we also had a little update on Kirk and Minor, the facilities. At Minor, they're updating the playground, and they should have a design probably by this time. Some of the pieces are going to be put in the fall, and then the rest are going to be throughout the year. They're also working on the air conditioning at Minor and in the common areas in the gym. At Kirk, they're working on window replacements. They're still working on the hours, the start times for Kirk and for Minor. There were some concerns from the parents. They sent out surveys. The surveys should have come back by May 3, and then they're going to evaluate that. Dr. Hackett and her staff are going to take a look at that, and they're also going to explore some after-school activities and maybe partnering with NWSRA also. So there's more information to come as they transition for the move. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Education Research Development Legislative Report. Mr. Dombrowski.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend Friday. I'm not sure if we sent someone.
We sure did, yeah. I wanted, just to update the board a little bit on some information Lauren's going to present regarding, you've heard about the graduated tax proposal, and as a component of that, there is a, an attached corollary about wanting to offer a property tax freeze, and so I wanted to just give you a little bit of information about that, and Lauren will fill us in with some additional information.
Thank you. Certainly, one of the areas of discussion at the latest EDRed meeting was Senate Bill 690, which is regarding the property tax freeze. As Dr. Kate shared, the property tax bill is tied to the progressive income tax change known as the Fair Tax, and it would take effect with the 2022 levie year. The freeze to be effective would be under two conditions. One would be that the progressive income tax would need to be approved by the voters on a ballot, and the other is that the state funding would be met at certain levels. So the evidence-based funding, there is a minimum requirement established by law that that would have to be, continue to be met. And the other is that the categorical aid payments that are made to school districts would be funded at 97%. There's a lot of discussion and uncertainty, just lack of clarity surrounding the 97% and what specifically that is targeting. So I know that is one of the areas that they are trying to actively seek some additional information on. The other component about this bill is that it would only freeze the property taxes for school districts. It would not impact other taxing bodies. In addition to that, there was a great presentation by some attorneys from forensic regarding some, just Title IX implications for school districts, and those were the highlights from the latest EDRed meeting.
I just wanted to, that's a very good summary. There's some pieces around it that continue to be discussed very vocally down in Springfield with a lot of energy and differing viewpoints, as you might imagine, in terms of, does that apply to all districts? Is that only districts who are operating above the state's minimum, you know, adequate level of funding? There's a lot of permutations that are going on around this, and we'll bring back updates as they occur. It's still some time off, but I wanted to make sure that you had awareness of the Senate bill in case you wanted to be tracking it, and then we'll also provide some information to you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. We had another great meeting. The presentation remains online and available for you. We covered the IMRF employer rate and budget and financial forecast foundational information, and we got a great update on the district's progress toward fully funding IMRF and the importance of that fiscal efficiency and our continued improvement. Next item, our.
Excuse me. I just wanted to mention something from, from the facilities. I just wanted the members of the board to know that the drainage system at Frem and Schaumburg, Frem and softball and baseball fields performed quite well during these last two weeks with all the rain that we had. I stopped by the fields like four or five times, especially after it rains, and saw some great games. And I'll tell you, if we didn't have the drainage system that we put in, we would have sure, each team would have sure lost, would not have been able to play four or five games, and they would have canceled. So I thought it was a great thing that we did, and I think all the players and the coaches are pleased with the workmanship that was done.
Good. Thanks for the update. That'll bring us to our announcements. If there are no questions here, next we have closed session. And the suggested motion is that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter relating to an individual student, collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body, probable and probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. All right, we have a suggested motion that the board return to open session.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. And Mr. Lefever.
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Gregory Sharvat, effective May 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Susan Druffel, effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Willie Fillion, effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Hope Hayeslett, effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Michelle Hensley, effective May 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Sharon Young, effective May 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Teresa Longkarick, effective May 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. John Nally, effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Robert O'Quinn, effective May 2020, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
And still Lefever.
Aye. We have a suggested motion that effective July 1, 2019, Lindsay Tiratilli be appointed as Assistant Director of Special Education for District 211 at a gross salary of $133,000.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye. If there's nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.